If you're left in this room, the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record in minutes, so if please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or their representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, and give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input, and the board will then move onto a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Michelle, if you'd introduce the first case.
Let's see how you are. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1407-1. Upon the matter of request by J.H. Willer, acting as agent for the Aranacoid Bay Fishing Game Club, for wetland and floodplain environmental protection overlay district EPod permit to construct a 16-foot by 24-foot by 8-foot opened-air pavilion located on an 18-foot by 30-foot concrete slab on premises 658 Bayfront Lane South in an R2 residential district.
Make a brief presentation if you would.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jay Willer, and for this meeting I will use 658 Bayfront Lane South as my address. I am here representing the Aranacoid Bay Fishing Game Club, as previously stated, in our application to construct a 16-by-24 open-air pavilion on an 18-by-30-foot concrete floor.
I see that we've received some information from your contractor.
Yes. At the planning board workshop, a couple of concerns were raised. One was in regards to waste runoff that may or may not go into the bay during construction. Kevin Sharp from Finger Lake Construction, who will be doing the actual building of the pavilion, has sent to you to my attention, and I pass it on to you, that it'll take all necessary precautions to prevent the runoff of waste into the bay, and they are also governed by Article 6 of the Department of Environmental Conservation Permit, which states that they need to take all precautions necessary to avoid such runoff into the bay. The second concern that was raised at the meeting was drainage from the roof, and we had several different options there, from letting it drip onto bare concrete to installing a gutter system. Actually, you people on the board came up with a better idea of a 2-foot wide by 1-foot deep stone retention on the east and west sides, built into the ground to capture the The second message, and I apologize for the very small printing, is from Dave Hauer, President and CEO of Lumar Construction, who has agreed to go along with those changes in his building plans. And I'm here to answer any other questions you may have.
We appreciate you taking our advice, and I see that there was a little bit of cost to it, but I do think it'll be better for you in the long run, not having the water drain back through the pavilion, but...
Actually, it's a little bit less than the gutter system would have been, so...
We'll find another way, then.
Don't worry, I'm sure it'll be cost overrun somewhere.
Mike, did you have anything to add at this point?
I'll just make mention that this is located in the wetland EPod and floodplain EPod, in that a permit was issued from DEC for working in the wetland buffer, which should address any of the major concerns associated with the wetlands. And being an opened-air pavilion, we see very little impact to any potential flood storage here, since water could pass underneath it and through it without any problem at all. So, from an environmental standpoint, I think they have those two concerns regarding the wetland EPod and the floodplain EPod addressed.
Thank you. Jay, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Rich?
No questions. I think we vetted this out pretty good at the workshop, and I'm comfortable with it.
Ray?
I agree with Rich. We vetted it, and I appreciate you doing what you did.
Thank you.
And again, want to say thank you for considering the thoughts of the board, incorporating them in your design. Michael?
I feel the same. I'm comfortable in every respect, but with Kevin Sharp's one sentence, "We'll do everything we can." Am I okay with the vagueness of that? Peter, you help me. You're the boss.
All necessary precautions? What are you looking at?
I don't know. It shouldn't be... Does it... Do we need detail, or... No.
I think that's inspection... We're not over 1 acre, we don't need SWIP inspections, but the building inspector will be out down there.
So, we're comfortable. I'm comfortable. If you're comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
I'm very comfortable with everything, too.
At this point, we'd like to open it up to any input, or questions, concerns, or comments from the public. Seeing none, we'll close the public input portion of the hearing. Is there any other questions that the board has of the applicant? Seeing none, we should go through the secret determination?
This is an unlisted action?
Type 2 action.
Yep, this is a type 2 action. It involves the construction of an accessory nonresidential structure, less than 4,000 square feet or area.
Are we going to go through the short form?
You don't even need to go through that exercise, since it's type 2.
Yes.
You just need to recognize that on the record, that it's a type 2 action. No further environmental reviews needed.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for PB 1407-1 with respect to SECRE, move it's a type 2 action, negative declaration.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Bernie is absent. Motion carries. So, we are permitting preliminary and final site plan as well as the EPod? Correct?
Right. No site plan approvals needed here, it's just the EPod permit.
And I have the condition that we add the pea gravel trench ground gutter to absorb roof runoff on the east and west sides of the pavilion. Any other conditions?
No. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to move approval for PB 1407-1, upon the matter of request by J.H. Willer, acting as agent for the Aranacoid Bay Fishing Game Club, for wetland and floodplain environmental protection overlay district permits to construct a 16-by-24-by-8-foot open-air pavilion located on an 18-by-30 concrete slab on premises 658 Bayfront Lane South in an R2 residential district, with the pea gravel as stated. I move approval.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you for investing in Aranacoid.
Thank you.
Good luck with it.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1407-2, upon the matter of request by T-Mobile Northeast LLC, acting as agent for the Seabreeze Volunteer Fire Association, Inc., for preliminary final site plan approval to install nine wireless communications antennas on an existing building with site-related work on premises 4657 Culver Road in a C commercial district.
If you open the board there, there is a little stand inside there, if you need to display anything.
That would have been my first question.
It's BYO easel.
I guess I introduce myself first. My name is Taylor Klein. I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. As we mentioned a couple weeks back, T-Mobile's looking to expand their coverage in nearby area by enhancing their coverage around the amusement park. I drove the area, and I gave T-Mobile my... Best of my knowledge, what I would think would work best for their network, and they've looked everything over and found that the rooftop of the volunteer fire station would be their best bet to enhance their coverage needs in the area. I'll pull up the plans here and show you.
If you would, take the cordless mic and...
Okay.
And one of the board members has just asked if you could speak up a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Sure. Yeah, that'd be great. I'll get to the page that...
The human easel is allowed.
In the previous work session... Sorry. In the previous work session, we were asked to make a couple revisions to our drawings concerning the retaining wall. We've included in our plans... I'm just trying to find it here. I apologize. That it'll be a poured retaining wall, and we are including that in the site plan sheet C 102, where it mentions the proposed poured concrete retaining wall, approximately four feet tall, to replace the existing. We're also looking to put up a 6-foot chain-link fence with no barbed wire. That is included. Yeah. Yep, so, we're going to... It's pretty, right? So, we're just going to put some privacy slats through the fence, so nobody can actually see the cabinets within when they pull up in the parking lot there. And the other concern, I recall, is how the concrete blocks and everything is to be tied down, so it doesn't move in a storm, say. And we've included a note on sheet C 501, says, "Provide tie-down kit for ballast comm scope part," and it gives the part number and whatnot, so they'll be tied down. So, if we get some high winds, nothing's going to be moving around. What T-Mobile's proposing to do is to install nine antennas in the roof, three sectors, three mounts, three... Was it three antennas per sector? Three antennas per sector, nine total. They're going to install a 10-by-16 concrete pad on the ground to house their cabinets, and they're going to run the lines up the side of the building to each of the roof mounts to the antennas. And, all right. Let's see here. You're already ahead of the game here. All right, so, let's do the before and after, just to give you guys a better idea. View from the southeast, you got the... Right there, the other one there. Here's your view from the road on the southeast, looking at the fire department. This is before, and this is after our install. You can see one of two sectors, the third sector's in the back. Okay? Yeah, there you go.
I'm doing the best I can.
Doing good.
You're no fan of white, sir.
Here's from the back. This is the before. Here's where our equipment is going to be housed, and here's the after for the one sector in the back, the gamma sector. Lastly, here's the before view from the east, the front, and the after. That's about it.
Mike, did you have anything to add?
I'd just point out that, based on the renderings, there doesn't seem to be an overriding visual impact as a result of these are pretty low-profile, and though we probably couldn't see from that distance, there are some existing antennas that are higher in height than the proposed ones.
Thank you. Do I have questions from the board now, Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a problem with the antennas. It doesn't look like they're going to be very obtrusive. My biggest concern with the site, that I went to see, if you can give me one of the...
No photos?
Sure. There's this area over in here, in the back, where the equipment shed's going to be. There's a bunch of tires back there, there's drywall, there's center blocks, there's general trash, that area that's sort of behind the storage shed over here, or the garage over here, and is overgrown. And when I first looked at the plans, I thought, you know, why are they putting barbed wire on the top of, you know, around the outside of it? I'm glad you're not now, but after looking over here, I was wondering, I was thinking, well, maybe that's... You know, the area just isn't well-kept over in there. And there's also several windows that are boarded up, and I don't know if that's temporary, or are you going to put new windows in or what, but, you know, I'd like to see at least as part of this, that we... That area, you know, we put on as one of the conditions as that area gets cleaned up. You shouldn't be stacking... I don't think you should be stacking tires back there either, so...
I'm the chief of the department.
Hold on a second. You got to come on up to the... Address the microphone, sorry.
Chief Dave DeRoller, Seabreeze Fire District. There's no problem taking care of that. It would have been a lot easier if that was an offline conversation, it's not pertaining to the plans that we're putting forth. As for the windows, the windows have been replaced, there's a major revitalization project going on there, painting the building, redoing the windows, and those will get replaced with glass block, but it would have been a little bit easier if it would have been taken offline. Any other questions?
Well, the reason we're here is to...
No, I understand. I understand fully.
I came by the other day, but you were having a party, so I didn't want to interrupt you.
Oh, good. We'll get it all taken care of.
Thank you.
Rich?
Just one question. The privacy slats that you're proposing, has a color been decided, or is the color going to be at least consistent with the color scheme that's with the building now?
They can be any color, so I guess we can include that in our drawings.
Yeah. I don't need them to be... I don't necessarily need you to tell me a particular color, but I want it to be consistent with the color scheme of the building. You've got a tan and a red now, so I think one or the other would be appropriate.
Okay. Yeah, well, I'll confirm that with these guys, and we'll be sure to include it in our drawings for the building permit.
Ray?
I agree with Mr. Safran. I think there are other towers in the area much higher. I see no visual impact that's negative to the community whatsoever. I'd also like to commend in what Mr. Ritchie said. Over the last year, I know that the fire department has actively put in new windows, new... The upgrades to the building have been fabulous, and I think it's great, and I hope this works for you. Thank you.
Go to Mary next.
I also concur with everything that's being said. The fire department has gone a long ways in the last few years to make it look much better, so I'm sure that whatever improvement you make is going to continue in that way.
Michael?
I'm comfortable, thank you. I'm fit.
I have nothing else to add at this point. At this point, we'll open it up to public input. Anyone wishing to speak in regards to this application may do so. Close the public input portion of the hearing. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. When we first got this, I was very concerned about the visual impact that these antennas were going to have, and we were provided some real good pictures, not only tonight, but also at the workshop, and having gone out there and sat and taken a look in the area, I don't think that these are going to have a large visual impact on the area, considering what's there now. So, I just wanted to indicate that initially I was very concerned about this proposal, but based upon your presentation and having a chance to take a look at it, I'm much more comfortable with it now.
The photo simulations from the ground are obviously a more real representation than the straight-on elevation, which really makes it look much more impactful than what it would be in actuality, so we appreciate that documentation, and that was very necessary to the application, so thank you. At this point, we need to review SECRE. We believe this will be an unlisted action.
That's right.
Is it an unlisted action? We reviewed part 2 and part 3?
Yes, we have to go through.
All right. So, Mr. Safran from La Bella has provided us with their preliminary review of part 2 and part 3.
Yes.
Has anyone had a chance to take... Let's just run through these quickly. Part 2 vision impact. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with the adopted land use? No. Will the proposed action result in change in the use of the intensive of the land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? Of a critical environmental area? No. Number 5. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies or wastewater? No. And no. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change of the natural resources? No. The only one I thought that any discussion, and we just mentioned, was number 8, and we did not feel that there would be any character influence, as we have stated already in the past. Did anyone disagree with anything on page 3 or 4 that I just recited?
You got 10 and 11.
I know, but I was just doing the page 3.
No, we're good.
Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? And the answer to that is no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? And the answer to that is no. Some comments in part 3 that we may amend or add to or agree to as they are stated. The underlying use of the property will remain the same. The traffic, utilities, and stormwater runoff will be unaffected. Emissions associated with the project are very minimal and are limited to those generated by temporary construction activities. Anticipated energy uses is unavoidable and will likely be comparable at alternate locations, and the project sponsor provided photo simulations demonstrating that visual and aesthetic impacts will be minimal. Does everyone agree with everything that's contained in there?
Yes.
Is there anything that we want to amend or alter? I don't see any myself. As such, would someone like to make motion on unlisted action, negative declaration for the SECRE?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. With respect to PB 1407-2, SECRE action, I move it's an unlisted action, negative declaration.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, excuse me, say nay. Seeing none, motion carries. Six to one. We are making a motion for preliminary and final site plan approval.
I'd like to do that, Mr. Chairman. Under the matter of PB 1407-2, upon the matter of request by T-Mobile Northeast LLC, acting as agent for Seabreeze Volunteer Fire Department, Inc., for preliminary final site plan approval to install nine wireless communication antennas on an existing building with site-related work on premises 4657 Culver Road in a C commercial district. I move for approval with what Mr. Pelukas had said as it relates to the slats on the privacy fence that they fit with the building.
I have the color of the fence infill slats to be sympathetic with building colors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move approval.
Second?
I do. Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment here?
Yes.
I believe the applicant has amended the plans that the board has reviewed. Maybe you should mention the barbed wire fencing is being removed...
Oh.
...as well as the acknowledgement that there's a retaining wall here, so we should review and approve the plans ultimately.
I agree on the barbed wire. Isn't it implicit that the fence be... I mean, the retaining wall be reviewed, I think, as a building permit item? So, I'm going to add that no barbed wire fencing is included. Thank you, Michael. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you for investing in Aranacoid.
Thanks, everyone. It's been a pleasure.
Really? We appreciate that.
What'd he say? What'd I miss? What'd he say?
He said it's a pleasure.
He said it's a pleasure? He said it's a pleasure.
He said it's a pleasure.
It is a pleasure.
The next thing that we're going to be discussing is the town of Aranacoid sign code. Maybe you could just introduce this for us, Nick?
Over the course of the past couple months, in speaking with a number of business owners, the town board has looked at amendments to the town's sign code pursuant to Section 235-99. Any changes to the zoning code are referred to the planning board for report. Everyone should have the proposed change, which really addresses temporary sandwich board signs, A-frame signs. They're currently allowed in four districts in town with your approval. This would allow them in commercial and manufacturing districts and R6, which is all the business districts that encompass the town. It would allow business owners to advertise with a sign permit. Obviously, you'd have to come in, get a sign permit, you'd have to get it approved. There's a number of, if you read the law, the proposed amendment, there's a number of guidelines that are given towards number on lot, size of sign, making sure that the sign is professionally done, that it isn't... So, that it looks aesthetically pleasing and doesn't harm the visual impact on the neighbors. So, that's what's the matter is before us now. How this would work, and actually, correct me if I'm wrong, is the report you guys issue will ostensibly be an organized version of your minutes, categorized and distributed for your review. After this meeting, the secretary will put together the comments based upon this discussion that we have, and those recommendations will be given to the town board as they consider this at their August 21 meeting. There'll be a public hearing where anyone that cares to come and speak on this can obviously come to the August 21 public hearing. It'll be at 7:30. That's been advertised to the public.
That's right.
a public hearing where anyone that cares to come and speak on this can obviously come to the August 21 public hearing. It'll be at 7:30. And that's been advertised to the public.
That's right.
My only question I had was a little bit is to pertain to the size of the signs. And they seem to be different sizes of A-frame signs, if you will, in different districts. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
And for different permits, for different usage, too. I had the same question.
It seemed like they were, I mean, my only comment would be that they seem like a lot of different sizes that might be, make it more difficult to enforce if it's, are you having a farm market in the manufacturing district and now am I having what size sign?
I think that's a fair question. I think what's unique about the town, right, is we have places that are farm markets in the commercial district, you know, similar to the Gengiches, similar to, actually, that's not as good an example, really Amens Farm Market and Wombach's, those areas that are in parts of town where advertising for a farm market can be a little different than a conventional business. So it was meant to give flexibility to those businesses to be able to advertise. I certainly, if there's comments on making it more uniformed or changes in the size, by all means, if there's suggestions, that's why we're doing this.
I mean, I guess I would take it for the comment as it might and just talk with staff and meaning and see if it's too problematic to enforce that many different sizes. I don't know. I was looking at the back. There's this chart for area in the square feet and different districts. There's two square feet, 15 square feet, 32 square feet, six square feet, 32, 32. The heights are 6, 6, 4, 20, 20. You know, there's just a lot of different.
Well, free standing signs, if you look at the definition, some-
That's not the-
Yeah, that's not technically-
Okay.
The definition that the A-frame signs fall under is portable. And those, I know what you're talking. If you look at the definition of the chapter, what a freestanding sign is, it's actually slightly different than what a, it's a very, our sign code is very detailed in terms of what it spells out, the different types of signs are. So I think that that's actually not-
Maybe you want to add portable signs then to this chart and then put this?
Could do that.
Well, I, wouldn't all the signs have to be portable based on the fact that they're temporary?
And they both are spoken, in the code are spoken to and defined differently. But yes, if something is portable, by definition, could be temporary. If you look at what a temporary sign is in the code, that would cover things such as a real estate sign.
Okay.
You know, things like that. Political signs are considered temporary. It's the definition of the code now, actually, we can get it out and read it. But it specifies there's different, there's slight differences to each, the way that our code is written.
Nick?
And the size difference isn't a lot. I mean, when you're talking about the portable, temporary kind of things, I think it runs from 875 to 17 square and-
Sounds right.
And when I looked at it, I too was puzzled. Why are we making different size signs? Your explanation, as I drive by Wombach's or Amens, yes, those signs are larger. I'd also like to see a timeframe for how long a sign can remain. I mean, grand opening doesn't stay for five years.
Sure.
I think it should be, I think the sign should be a special sign, indicating that there's a special event occurring, a special sale going on, corn is up and on the market, we're having a closeout sale. It shouldn't be, we open five to 10. I don't think it should be a sign that is permanent, even though-
I mean, once a business has permitted a sign, are they allowed to change the graphics on the sign periodically? I mean, you know, like a farm stand, it may be like corn, beans, and zucchini, and then it's radishes now, or, you know, I don't know. I mean-
And I agree with Pete. I think that's what should happen. What should happen is that, again, I'll use Wombach's, corn's in now, we got the sign out.
Sure.
Next week, you know, we won't advertise strawberries because they were in June.
Sure.
So when the corn's gone, the sign's gone, or they change it. It should be, it should be announcing to the public that we have this, and it's not going to happen forever. And I think there should be a timeframe for any sign that is of this nature.
Michael, allow me to ask a question. Are you talking about structure or message?
Message.
So structure-
Well, I-
Remain, just asking a question.
I, no, I don't foresee someone putting an A-frame out and it stays there forever. I foresee that they use that for special events, if I might use the word special events. I can't think of another word. But we have corn this week, and it's, you know-
Well, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but the sign is allowing a temporary portable sign from, portable temporary sign from March 1 to November 1, between the hours of 6 and 8. So like in the case of a farm market, if they came in, are they buying one permit for a sign to be up during that month, those month period, and they could put whatever they want on it?
As long as it's professionally done. And I guess I'd use the example of, you know, you wouldn't want to have a lot of handwritten signs, things like that. If you were going to put something, a sign up together that was going to be changed, you could construct a sign that looked, you know what I mean? There's a way of doing that that's not going out there with a marker or chalkboard, making that sign. Does that make sense?
It does. It does, perhaps, if you added to it something that said it should have the appearance of a professionally prepared-
I mean, a chalkboard sign wouldn't be bad either. I mean, somebody goes and puts-
Nick, I've seen things in restaurants that are just, you know, daily specials.
Sure.
Wow. Artistic, professionally done.
I mean, look at Wegmans, their chalkboards are-
I know. And then I've seen other ones that are just like somebody with a crayon that did it. So how do you define, I guess, that comes into play, too?
Sure. I agree.
I mean, to me, if it was a professionally made chalkboard and you had a child scrawling on it or a artist, I mean, it's up to the, I mean, the backer is all professional. It's not like it's falling apart or cop together, but-
Sure. And part of this is approval, right? So I think the proposal right now is that it would be permitted with a sign permit as opposed to, and this is a question for the board, you know, you guys permit for, in four districts, you approve A-frame signs currently. Is it better to do it that way for these remaining districts? Or, and I know we've talked about this a little bit, or is it to, is it make more sense to have it be reviewed administratively and a sign permit issued?
I think it should be administratively reviewed. But, I mean, the things that I was looking at were, I just think it's too many different sizes of signs. And even like in the business and multi-residential, there's one for perimeter, freestanding signs, temporary perimeter signs, and then non-perimeter signs. I'm like, what is, I mean, I would just-
I think when you look at that, it speaks more to, those are bigger complexes, right? You go down some of the bigger roads. It's not like it's a smaller area. So it could, there's some in the front, there's signs in the front advertising apartment for rent, and there's ones around the side. I understand what you're saying. I think it was very, this is very descriptive as to what was allowed to be flexible. That's why we're having the conversation, if there's a better way of doing it. We're all ears.
Nick, it's, on a sandwich board sign, why couldn't it be magnetic, especially for these farm markets, and then have their-
Yeah, it could be.
Their signs go up there when they need them.
Yeah, and I think the definition of professionally constructed, that's something we can look at. Actually, I don't believe that that's defined in the code now, but there'd be, we could come up with a definition so that that gives not only us guidance now, but in the future, this is something we're writing so that whoever's interpreting this code five, 10, 15 years from now. So I think that's, that could be. I think you've won me over on the chalkboard. I understand what you're saying. That can be something that's, I'm not very artistic, so I'm not as open-minded about the-
Art is in the eye of the beholder. I mean, if it's a professionally prepared, you know, chalkboard surface and whoever writes on it.
Sure.
I mean, some people have good writing and some people have bad, but it's still professionally prepared.
And this would also be subject to the same code enforcement activities that go on currently. So if a sign is out of, and that's written right into the current code, if a site is out of compliance, then if it's in disrepair, it's not professional, you know, if something changes, the aspects of the sign change over time that wasn't permitted, well, then that wouldn't be allowed. And there's the ability to, and that's already in the current code. You would have to-
I'm still looking for a more definitive answer about the period of allowing signs out there, as to whether it's a single permit for all of the, all the time, and a single fee. Because I don't, I don't think you'd want to tax them to death by saying, well, every time you come in, every 20 days, you got to give me another fee.
I mean, I think the purpose is that they can get one between March-
March and November.
November, between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM, and it has to be professionally paired and prepared, and you have to, you can put whatever you want on it, and you could change whatever you want, whenever you wanted, right?
Correct.
And then next year, you got to come in and get another permit for it.
And the reason that was put in there, and that's up for conversation, too, was we have difficult winters here in Arondicoy, and oftentimes, these are, none of them should be in the right of way. That's already in the existing law. These can't be in the right of way. But oftentimes, when the snow plows and things like that, you know, these signs can get pushed around and ultimately end up on top of snowbanks and stuff. And that's what we don't want. That doesn't really help anybody, and that would not be the intent. So that was why that existing, there is a timeframe in the, in the way it's written right now that we would permit them from those hours. I'm also open to saying, is the timeframe is not appropriate, should we, if that doesn't make sense. So that's a good, something I'd like to hear from the board on, too. Should there be a timeframe?
I think the timeframe is fine. I was, I was more into something a little later, like 8 to 8, only because if you did have plows out, street plows, up plows, they typically have it done before an 8 o'clock AM frame.
Well, that's why the month, the months of the year in here, I hopefully, we don't have snow.
Well, we might have snow in November 1.
Yeah, I'm going to eat those words. But hopefully, we wouldn't have snow.
We have had snow on Halloween.
March to November.
Yeah, we've had snow.
No, we, yeah, we do.
It's just a dusting, though.
But hopefully, it wouldn't be that often.
My only comment is I think you should simplify it a little bit, the sizes. There doesn't need to be that much variance in size. And I guess I understand if a residential property, like an apartment complex, wants more than one. I can't really see, it says one perimeter portable sign, but then there's no quantity, oh, no, one. I mean, to say they can have up to two and they're both the same size.
Okay.
I have a question, Nick, as it relates to number four, nor have motion oscillate spin. And then I'm looking at number five, pennants, inflatable signs, whip sails, tethered balloons are prohibited. Why? And the reason I ask is, has anyone looked at placement of those signs? DOT, is there a problem with it along major roadways? Does it affect traffic flow?
Let's back, we'll back up first. So beacons, pennants, strings of lights, inflatable signs, tethered balloons, those are already prohibited. So that's already in the law.
Right. People, the only reason I ask, these people, obviously, as we're going down Ridge Road, we're seeing that. At the Firestone the other day, I saw the Firestone guy, you know, oscillating and what have you. I see an inordinate amount of whip sails.
Sure.
Is there designated? And the other question I have as it relates to that, if you're changing the code, and we spoke about this, I'd like to hear what business owners think. Does it help businesses? Does it preclude? What's, what really happens there?
Well, that's why we're, the public hearing on the 21st, and we've been going out and talking to business owners that are affected by this. And we'll be making all of them aware of the fact that this is on for the 21st. That's why you have a public hearing. So you invite them, folks to come in and say their piece. We definitely want to hear from them, but the-
That is something that I would be willing to say, maybe they could be specially permitted and have to be, seek planning board approval.
I agree with that. I think, you know, really-
We can set the stipulations for the time and amount. I mean, if somebody wants to have a big auto sale and they need a tethered balloon, I mean, plan it out, permit it?
Well, and just to, so we are clear, currently, that is already, that's already not permitted. So that would be-
Again, it could be a change that, again, because we are trying to change the code or look at changes.
Sure.
I mean, if it's specially permitted, somebody that wants a whip sale that says Big Mac 99 cents, they could come in and get one, right? I mean-
We, you could write it, you could write it that way. That's why we have the conversation, right? I think that was not, we weren't looking at making those signs more available to be had. But if we have people, if in the course of the public hearing, if there's a, in our talks with business owners, and we hear that folks are interested in that, that's certainly something to look at. Currently, we're not. But that's, sounds like it's something worth considering.
Agreeing with what Ray says, if there's a public opinion that they want those, I mean, maybe you could make those especially permitted use and require planning board approval.
And just to, one or two, this did go to Monroe County Planning, and typically in matters like this, they don't, they don't have a formal approval because they're not, there's not, we're not, they're not an affected agency in that regard. But they do have, they will be commenting on what they think of the law. And that's certainly something we can ask them to do, to look at, is have Monroe County DOT, you know, offer some kind of opinion on what they think about those types of signs in addition to day frame signs.
Is there a more specific timeframe about the duration of a particular sign? Again, using Wombach's as an example, can they put that corn for sale sign up from March to November? Or should it be something that's seasonable or seasonal and not something that advertises the same thing all the time? Because that takes away from my perspective the meaning of a special tool or a special permit for a sign.
Mike, again, I would ask, just not to be a smarty pants, but-
You are a smarty pants, but go for it.
Thank you. Again, I think there's a difference between structure and message.
I want the message changed.
Well, over what period? As we've talked before, in packaging, new is not new after six months. I mean, if I do a package for Nabisco, that blurb, that has to come off. A lot of rules with that. But how do you determine that? I mean, if it's all season, I'm just not sure how to do that. And again, the structure could be in the same place, per se.
Yeah.
But, you know, again-
I think we're regulating the structure, and I agree with you, Ray, and the message is important to the business owner. If they think it's important to say corn out there from March to November, then that so be it. I think as long as it's a professionally prepared sign and corn is important, then corn is what their message is. And if it needs to be changed, they can change it. If not, they can not change it. And if they thinks by saying new corn is for six months sells, then that's their prerogative also. And I, you know, so I think it's hard to regulate the message. I mean, other than we don't want-
I think that if I was a business owner, I would have more than one sign because you can have whatever you're selling that month.
Right.
I think if-
I think they can afford it.
You've convinced me. You've convinced me that, and probably the right thing to do would be to allow this, the changing of the message, to be up to the proprietor of the store. And so we're, we're saying, yeah, you got to have a permit, but this is the framework within your work. You don't, we're not going to dictate-
I think it's mainly the structure that we're trying to regulate, the size, that it's not somebody taking a couple of cinder blocks and sticking a piece of plywood in it and spray painting sale.
And I think, I agree. And I think that as long as the message on the sign and the way that that message was conveyed is consistent with how the approval was, and doesn't, isn't wildly different, or doesn't add some sort of addition to it, to the size of the sign, then I think that that makes a lot of sense. We're not going to make someone, well, my opinion wouldn't be that we would make someone come and get a new sign permit every time they wanted to change the text. I think that would be ill conceived.
Chairman, can I, I just have a few things to go through here. Just want to start at the top. Number one, we talked a little bit about this, about some of the, I don't want to get all lawyer on you, but I want to make sure that we have the right words in there so that we, so that we can make sure that we can enforce it. Yeah, I didn't use that. It is a verb, and it's-
Spicking on you.
Lawyer. No. The, number one, the last part of the sentence says something about so as to obstruct or impair the vision of a motorist. I, I don't know what the rules are regarding that. I mean, just about any sign that's between the road and where the car is traveling is going to impede the vision of the motorist. But it'd be good to have a little bit more definition about what you're trying to say when you're trying to impede that. That's one. The whole thing about having a sign that's professional in appearance is, is very subjective. And I'm concerned that, you know, one person's scrawl is another person's, you know, Rembrandt. So we need to, we need to have, I don't know what the guidelines are about that. But if it means that you have to have, you know, professional font, or you can't, you know, you can't have handwritten signs or whatever it is, but something about- But something about it should have, be more, you know, uh, specific than what is in there now. There's, there's a lot of places in Arondacoit where you can't really put a sign unless you put it in the right of way. So if you, uh, I'm thinking mainly along Ridge Road East where there's the section between Culver and Goodman on the north side of the road. And there's signs there now, there's A-frame signs there now, and I know they're all illegal. But there's, I, I don't know exactly how to get, get around that. But maybe they can put a banner sign from the, if, if they wanna put one of those up. Let's see, what else? I think that the three temporary portable signs for farm markets, sing, singling out farm markets, I think that's excessive. That's a lot of, I don't know why, you know, you've, everybody else gets one or two or whatever. Why do farm markets get three? Um, you know, the farm market, we've talked about WAM box and Amens and stuff like that. Their, their storefront is no bigger than the other ones. So why would they get, you know, uh, singled out as, as being preferential, you know, preferentially singled out like this? I would think that you'd wanna have them as same amount as, as others. You mentioned that there's a, uh, there's, there's a time during, there's, there's a, during the day, there's a time limit when you can have the signs out. Do we really think that people are gonna bring the signs in every night if they're chained down or whatever? And how are we gonna enforce that? Nobody's here to enforce it at night. So I don't know why you have that in there. It doesn't make sense to, to have it in because if a, if a, if a business owner thinks that the sign's gonna get ripped off, then they're gonna bring it in. If they feel comfortable leaving it out, there's, there isn't a whole lot of incentive to not leave it out. So I think that that's something we ought to think about a little bit more. And, um, in general, I, I'm not a, actually not in general at all. I'm not a big fan of, at all of, of A-frame signs. I think they, you know, people put up, uh, nice signs on their buildings and they put an A-frame sign in front of it. It cheapens it, I think, but that's their business and I don't think it looks good. I just don't. One other thing I was wondering is, I, I realize that you can review these codes at any point, but I'd like to put something in if they could, if the town board agrees is that I'd like this to be reviewed in, in some timeframe, either a year or two years. And specifically, I, I wanna re, wanna have a review of the changes that we made. One thing I'd like to know is, is, is it increasing at all the number of accidents on any of the major thru fairs? We don't have a lot of these signs around. There are some that are illegal now. There's, there's some that are gonna be put in the right of way that, that, you know, now that, now that they can get one legally, people are gonna put it in the right of way if that's the best place for it, for their business. So I'd like to just review it in a couple of years to see if, what the impact is in, in town. And if it's having a positive or negative impact, maybe you wanna either pull back or go forward with some of the things. And I think that's very important that we do that and, uh, because, um, the changes that you're talking about, I don't think are gonna make, there's, there's some, there's some peril in making the changes that we're talking about making. So that's basically all I have.
Uh, I have a, a few comments. Um, first of all, I just wanna say that I applaud the supervisor and the town board for taking this on. I think it's, uh, a great time to take this on. I, I also agree with Jay that in a perfect world, I, I hate these sandwich board signs, these A-frame signs. But, you know, we have to recognize, and, and I did talk to some businesses in town, some that had A-frame signs and some that didn't. And the people that had the A-frame signs insisted that they are beneficial to their business. And they do have people walk in and say, I saw your sign. And I think it's important, you know, Arondacoit's a great place to live and do business. And we need to find a way to make it workable for our businesses so that they can be successful. I was away this weekend, I was in a town that clearly, uh, didn't allow A-frame signs and they were very, very restrictive in the signs they do allow. Unfortunately, there were other attractions to the town and, and things that made it so that they were able to say, no. You know, we're trying to relive a certain era and unfortunately we're not in that era anymore. And we, I think we have to be understanding of how important these signs are to the businesses. Couple of things that came up, uh, while I was going through it, uh, the section dealing with contractor signs. I, I think there's a problem with the way that's written. It's, uh, section E says that signs shall be removed upon the completion of work to be performed or 30 days, whichever comes first. I think you're gonna have a hard time enforcing that. And, and ultimately that's the goal here. We wanna, we want a code that's understandable, it's workable for the people that live here and the people that do business. And it's enforceable by the town when it needs to be. And, and I, I just, you know, whichever comes first, well, you know, somebody comes in and puts beautiful windows in a house, work is completed in a day and they're supposed to pack their sign up and take it home. That's not really beneficial to the contractor. They want you to be able to see the nice new windows and know who installed them. So, you know, I, I think there, I would suggest to the town board that they consider allowing a sign for some period of time after the completion of work so that the contractor gets the benefit, but not to the detriment of everybody that lives around them. Uh, another example, you know, at one spot in town, somebody put in a beautiful concrete driveway and they put in a very professional sign next to the driveway. And it's not within the right of way, it's backed far enough, but I'm tired of looking at it. It's a beautiful concrete driveway, but I don't wanna look at the sign anymore. So I, I think it really needs to be addressed, um, in such a way that it benefits both the neighbors and the contractors. Um, plaza perimeter signs, I, I think it looks awful when you've got a big plaza and five, six, seven different stores within the plaza wanna have a sign, a sandwich board. We're already letting them put up a big sign out front on the front of their building. We're letting them potentially put a sign up out front on the street. I personally think if you're in a plaza and you got a sign up on your store, I don't, I don't think you should be allowed to put a sandwich board sign out front at all. Cause I think it looks trashy and I think it's just gonna be hard to enforce allowing a certain number. And who's gonna decide which tenants in a 20 tenant plaza gets to put signs out there and, and who doesn't? And how are they all gonna be on the same page so that we don't have more than the allotted numbers? So I, I would ask the town board to look closely at whether that's workable or not. Cause again, enforceability is really what we're looking for. This, this came to mind and I don't know if this is the right place to be addressing this or not, but, um, and, and this came up, I was doing some research on other towns in the country that have been dealing with these issues of, of limiting signs. You know, roadside memorials, these impromptu memorials when someone, uh, dies in the area is, is a very difficult issue for towns to deal with. Because you're dealing with them when there's a motion involved. I, I don't know if the town has a law about roadside memorials. Perhaps this might be a time to consider it. And I don't know what the right answer is. I, I just think that dealing with it now when emotions are not involved in a particular case and dealing it with it in the abstract would be much easier. But, you know, we, we all understand why they exist and, and they're nice in some people's eyes until it happens in your front yard and it's there for two years and the town doesn't have any way to deal with it. So, um, I would suggest that maybe that, under this ordinance, it might be a nice time to address that issue. The other thing, and, and I don't know if it really is relevant to this, but I'm, I'm tired of seeing the recurring garage sales. The places that are doing garage sales every other weekend, three days on the weekend because they've set up a side business in their house and they're putting up garage sale signs. Some of them aren't taking the garage sale signs down at all. And they're just leaving them up there and on some Saturdays they have their sale and on some days they don't, or they stick signs in their front yard. And, and I, I think that when you're talking about those signs, we're getting into issues of whether those, those are first allowable, the signs. But secondly, can somebody be doing recurring garage sales? I know one that occurs on a main thoroughfare right at a traffic signal. And I've seen a, a couple near accidents there when I'm going by it on Friday morning on the way to work. So I, I think now is a good time to address those issues. So, um, again, I, I applaud the town for taking this hat on now. I think it's overdue and, and, and I think a real good look at the statute that makes it enforceable can really clean up the looks of our town.
Can I speak to what Rich just had something to say is, is the plaza signs, I fully agree with what you're saying. If they were to put a sandwich board out front, is, are you talking about on that walkway? Where we're gonna be, we'll be impeding on the people, the pedestrians? Or are you talking about, let's use for instance, Arondacoit Plaza? Are you talking about on Hudson Avenue, which would really be a nice or?
Yeah, I.
I would think that the plaza owner must have something in his contract on that.
Uh, it, it's possible that it, it would be in the contract. But, you know, my concern is if we allow plazas to do it at all, you know, you're gonna wind up, if, if you allow them to put five up, what's to say tenants one through five get to do it? The sixth one goes out and decides to throw one up? And then how do you know which one to cite? I guess you cite the owner of the plaza.
Well, and that's just it, just to speak to that, that's, anybody that would come in for, cause those typically aren't owner occupied parcels, right? So there's a tenant, there's a landlord landlord relationship where you would need, um, just like things become for the board here. You would need, you'd, for the part of the permit process, you would need a letter from the plaza owner saying that they even will allow you to have this sign. And that would allow them and the town to at least know who is permitted to have a sign versus who isn't. That doesn't put the town in the situation of deciding, does, uh, this shop get one over this shop? That's not, that's the landlord's responsibility.
I mean, to me, I get back to the simplification and I think one property, one temporary sign, one size. And every use gets the same size. I mean, I would go to 30 by 42, which I don't think is very big and deliberately so. In that, you know, if the plaza gets one sign and they can, if they want it, and if Little Caesar's can use it for a month and the Hallmark store can use it during, you know, whatever, but that's it. And farm markets, I don't think they need three. I think one is good enough. And I do think that the giant sign is overused and the size in the farm market is a little big. And I think this is for temporary signs and small. And I think you can keep them a little more quaint by keeping them size down and less of an impediment to visual clutter as well as vehicular access and, and keep it to something that's what it's intended. And I think it's intended to be small, it's intended to be temporary and portable.
I wholeheartedly agree. I think if you make it more uniform, it's more enforceable, it's more understandable for everybody. And to me, nothing looks worse than driving down a road and all of a sudden seeing five signs that say tires, 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 tires. I mean, it just, um, if you're gonna let them do it. Yeah, I do remember it, yeah. But, uh, if, if you're gonna allow these types of signs, have one size sign, tell them where they can put it. And if they don't, well, abide, then.
I, I have a couple of things, but especially as it relates to this, and it's, it's absolutely a matter of discussion. We talked about tethered balloons. If I wanna be the Hallmark store and I have permission from the landlord to put some sort of balloons on the roof and Little Caesar's wants to put an A-frame sign by the road, that's two different, that's two different temporary signs. And we're saying, okay, it doesn't matter. If you've got 20 facilities within that plaza, only one person at a time can have a temporary sign. Is that really what we're trying to say? I mean, there's different ways to do different temporary things. And I'm not sure I agree with just one person can do it.
You can divide the sign up and Little Caesar's can have the top and the Hallmark store can have the bottom.
Tether balloons in orange and black or whatever.
Well, tethered balloons, I think the, the only reason that it's currently prohibited, but we talked about if someone, the business owners come before the, the town board and say, we really want these other temporary signs, that if anything, it would be specially permitted. And then we would have to set all the stipulations with it. And, you know, tethered balloons could be something for, you know, short, really short, in order to say, you know, how big is it? Where is it going in?
Absolutely.
Days and times and it's gonna be weakened.
Just to come back to something you've all said, enforceability, the, when you start talking about tethered balloons, which, I don't know how you enforce the size of a tethered balloon. That would be an interesting science project for our code enforcement team.
Size of the twine.
Yeah.
Well, there again, that would be something that would be completely.
I think it's a good conversation. I just, I, I, that would be difficult. Enforceability, I think is how we got, why we're here right now is because there was, wasn't, there was a law that wasn't really enforced. And maybe it wasn't necessarily all, never really just taken on and thought through. And that's why we're having the conversation. So, um, but I understand there could be a special circumstance where you'd want to have the tethered balloons.
I mean, it could be a balloon, you know, that big. Couple of other things from, from my perspective, and again, I'd like to agree with Rich. This is not an easy undertaking by any means, Nick, I'm sure. And I'm sure that the board and the supervisor have deliberated on this particular issue. I, I'm looking at number eight where, you know, just to go right to it, signs attached to or painted on vehicles parked in physical, visible from the public right of way. Okay, so he's not parking his vehicle in the car lot, but he's driving down the road and it's the hospital. You know, the Rochester General Hospital or Sam's Plumbing or, you know, whatever it may be. If he happens to park it.
Well, there's, there's a difference. I actually think, uh, more remember Richie sent around a good example earlier today. We can, it, it's pretty obvious when you see ones that aren't used for the course. If there's someone that has a commercial business and they have a sign on the side of their vehicle, that's one thing. If there's someone that has a commercial business and they not only have a sign on the side of their vehicle, but they have something in the flatbed of a truck that is coming out of there, um, that's different.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm looking for, and I, I agree with Mr. Richie too, but, and I've seen a particular vehicle parked in Walmart, parked in various places of Ridge Road. I'm fairly certain, fairly certain that that's not, you know, used on a daily basis for business. But what I guess I'm looking for is more definition on that particular item to make it more specific.
Okay.
That's all. But again, I commend you and, uh, thank you, Peter, for.
Nick, there, there was something in here about, um, snow plowing.
He started.
He's muddling.
There we, there we go.
I think it was under the contractor sign section.
Snow plowing contractor signs. The sign shall be removed within three days of completion of work. I, so.
I think I know where you're going with this.
That sign stays up year round in Rochester.
There's a lot of things I don't understand about that one.
Sure.
If we want someone that's, and I don't know if the intent is to say, um, if, if you have a snow plowing business and you wanna put a sign in front of your house, you have snow plowing business, then you can, you can put up a temporary sign. But I would think that if you wanna put up something about snow plowing, you, you set the dates to like October 1st, November 1st. And then you, those are the only dates that you can have the signs on for snow plowing. If you wanna limit the, the only reason I'm saying October 1st, November 1st is, that's a little bit arbitrary. But you mentioned in here that you wanna have all the temporary signs down by a certain date. And maybe the month before the, the snow flies, hopefully, is the right time to have it. If you wanted to, if, if, if the intent is to allow people that had, that do snow plowing to advertise it for a month or something like that, and that's, that's different than the way that I'm reading this.
I would make those even smaller signs, like those standard ones that go on the little metal rack.
Now you have different sizes and I, you're.
Yeah, you have me sold here, you're gonna, you have me sold on one, one, one.
But it's a political sign and you're only available for 30 days or something, you know, that type of size.
I think you wanna be careful the way you have it written. You don't want a snowplow contractor thinking he can start dropping signs and everybody's.
I mean, I would make it that really temporary metal, I mean, they're standard size. I don't know what they are. I mean, everybody gets, and you can put it up for 30 days and that's it. I can't, you know, I mean, cause I could see the small business owner that does leaf pickup or snow plowing or, you know, the contractor that's replaced the windows or the roofing. I mean, that happened, you know, you see him by saying deliveries, you know, they put up deliveries of.
Gutters by Joe, you know?
But I really think that, you know, too many is, is what we still is kind of within here. There's too many sizes and I don't know who says that, you know, you know, today's corn chowder day at the restaurant is more important than corns for sale at the farm stand, you know? And, you know, to make them small, they should be temporary, means portable. And something that's as large as some of those others are, you know, take two people to move. I just don't think that's, I think what we're trying to do is bring them down, decrease the amount, decrease the clutter, decrease the size. It's my opinion.
Lastly, Nick, if I might just, I would like to agree with Mr. Richie. I would like to readdress this in a year or so. I'd also like to have the opinion of the DOT. That would be my recommendation before they voted on specific types of signs. We talked about wind sails, you know, A, whatever it may be. What is, what is their opinion? Historically, maybe they can give that type of opinion, don't know if they do.
I think it'd be hard pressed to find the DOT having an opinion on this. I don't know that they. that they skin in this game.
Swear to you of asking, in other words, is what I'm saying.
You can always ask, of course.
And I mean, Mike, you might be able to add something to this from your experience. Love to hear it all, you know?
If you're looking for my input on this, I have a couple of items here I was going to suggest. One, what about corner lots? If there is a business on a corner lot, should he be limited to one or in the case of a corner lot, would you allow two? Just throwing out there for discussion.
Best thing of all is we don't have to answer this, the town board does.
Right.
Yeah, just throwing this out for discussion purposes. The, the position of the sign is to be 10 foot behind the property line. So potentially this is going to be, you know, 20 feet from the road. It's quite a bit from the travel lane to look at that as you're driving past, no matter the size, but you should distinguish that, you know, it has to be 10 foot from the road. But typically the property line is well behind the road anyway. So if by saying it has to also be 10 foot from the property line, you know, you're probably 20 foot from the road edge of the road. So it's going to be back there quite a bit. So you might want to give some consideration for that as well as topography. A lot of the businesses perhaps along Ridge Road may sit below the road. So by the time you go 20 foot or 10 foot into the property, it could sit down quite a bit below the road, make it pretty ineffective. I would point out here that string lights, I guess, under section two, item C there, strings of lights not permanently mounted to the rigid background are prohibited. And then over on section three, four, basically it says the sign should not be illuminated. Don't know if you want to clarify that, that you're pretty much saying you're not going to have any lights on your signs, no matter what the case is. And then just picking up what I think Richard had said about the contractors, if you really want to promote local businesses here, the fellow that is in replacing windows or putting gutters on a building for a day, he's not likely to come down to get a permit because he's going to be at such and such 54 Kane Drive for one day and then he's at another business the other day. Maybe you would, should give some consideration to the short-term contractor signs to be put up for a day or two or some period of time without a permit, providing, you know, you have to really somehow police that, that they're not up there permanently. But I could see, you know, giving the guy the break who comes into, comes into a neighborhood, puts up, you know, provides a service, whether it be windows, siding, roofing, to have a a sign without getting permit because he's at a different site, you know, every day of the week or once a week he's changing locations. Don't know if this is a part of this, but political signs, where do those, do those fall here as?
Those are already regulated, those are regulated.
Regulated, okay. And then I think at one time, I think Peter said, you know, next year you come in and get another sign. I didn't pick up that these signs are only good for a set period of time. And I don't know if it's the intention of the board to provide that input that they're good for 12 months or for the calendar year. Next season you have to come in and reapply. But something you might want to consider providing that input to the town board.
What were the thoughts? Is, once you get a permit, you can do it forever?
From administration standpoint, again, back to enforceability and having a law that's actually workable, there's, you know, so I think you'd have a sign permit that stayed with that property, like we permit signs now as a part of different processes. You'd have a permit for that sign and it would, you know, as long as they kept it in good repair, which is already in the code, if it was kept in good repair and was consistent with specifications of the code, you could have that sign for as long as you were being a good steward of the sign. So if we want to put a time limit on, if we want to make them come back every year, I don't, I don't know if that's, that's helpful or not. That's certainly up for...
But how are we going to know if somebody goes and puts a sign up then, then never got a permit?
Well, just like any other code violation, they happen all over town. I mean, you, we don't, you get a complaint and you investigate the complaint and cite that business owner. It would be a code, that would be a code violation, that would be a violation of town code.
Suppose they had to reapply, Nick, without cost, but brought a picture of what they were doing to prove that the, the structure was still in good shape.
Well, I would, well, you already have signs in town that you approve, right? So if you were going to do it for these signs, then I guess...
Does that alleviate some of that enforcement issue?
Well, again, it goes back to enforceability is if, are people going to bring you in if there's no, I mean, I don't, I think that's again, kind of going to get back to why we are here now where there's, I can see what you're saying. We certainly thought about that when we're putting it together, something we can certainly look at more. But I think if you make people come back in, what they're going to do is similar to what happens now where folks just want it, they want to have the ability to advertise it. In the past, it was enforced. They're willing to take that risk that they may get a violation because it's worth it to them, to their business. I, at the end of the day, it's always, the goal is compliance, right? So doing the work on the front end to make sure that it's, it looks all right and it's in the specified areas and it meets the size specs. And if over time it doesn't meet those standards and it becomes dilapidated and it's not kept up, that's already, there's already a mechanism in the code to deal with that. It's a matter of just following through on it. So...
The other point, and I think this is to marry your point. Suppose, suppose you had a sticker of some sort, like a year sticker. Come in, you prove that your piece is in compliance, you get a sticker for that year. I, again, just throwing out ideas.
Sure.
I mean, they do that with tags, inspection stickers, you know, all different things. And it could be free if your sign or your structure, if you will, is still in compliance based on you showing that it is. And if it is, if a structure is out there and doesn't have that particular sticker or whatever it might be, you know, then we know they're not in compliance. Does that make it easier?
Then you have a sticker laden sign.
We're not going to have a sign to just do tat signs in town.
Is that the, the easiest way for compliance is what we have right now because they're not allowed? And there's a bunch of them around town now. So it's not going to get any easier than right now. And if, how are you going to, is your code guy going to go around and say, "Oh, this one doesn't have a permit for this?" Or, I mean, what?
It happens now. It happens every day in the town with different expenses.
It happens with...
Signs.
Well, it happens with fences because neighbors call and it happens with signs because they're not allowed anywhere.
Believe in me, we'll have somebody call with the signs. There's...
Oh, yeah. I mean, and that's, listen, the nature of a good law is that now, there's people that love them just everywhere and just you should be able to get them as much you want. There's people that would say, "I don't want them anywhere." I think probably the best laws usually are somewhere in the middle. So I think this is, there's certainly some good thoughtful ideas on how to better, but...
I think we should probably wrap things up. We've probably hit pretty much everything. But my opinion again is just keeping it simple. To me, it's one sign, one property, one size. And, you know, I think that probably the easiest enforcement is they get the permit, they can keep it till it changes over. Goes with the property. But I definitely would think about decreasing the size. I think that that really would, I mean, though, my opinion is temporary signs are portable and temporary. You don't need five foot by to put corn.
And you don't need three of them.
And you don't need three of them.
I'd really like to stress, I really want, if at all possible, if they can review the law in a couple of years, I'd really appreciate that.
Yeah.
I think it'd be good for the town.
I agree. We do that with, we do that with, with other, mostly on the zoning board has sunsets on some of the special permits that they do. This wouldn't, that wouldn't be unprecedented to have it reviewed two years from now.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Any posts?